Okay, everybody. Applies to Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act at a good notice this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of public meeting was provided in the notice January 2015. Said notice was posted at the interest of the Board Office, mailed to Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, New Jersey Herald News, and Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun on January 15, 2015, and Herald News January 24, 2015, posted on District Letter. This is an official meeting. Do you stand for a flag, Sully? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the duty of our republic to which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, in this world. Mr. Kuzin.
Mr. Carnicella.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Here.
Mr. Carraro.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Salera.
Here.
Mr. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Spazado.
Here.
Okay, Ms. Yemas. Ms. Yemas.
Mr. Kaczynski, you have a presentation to make?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Mr. Spazado, behalf of the Board, and I'm certain other board members have things they might want to say about you.
Please, man.
Some publicly and some not publicly, but I want to thank you for the great job you've done with us, Board of Education. I appreciate the leadership you've given us, the responsibility you've taken on. You've done a cool job, and I appreciate all the time that you've given us.
Thank you, Chuck.
Your mission.
That's a little beer, man. Don't whiskey.
Board members, feel free. Say whatever you'd like to say.
No microphone. I would like to take a few minutes to thank Mr. Tom Spazado for his years of dedication and service to this town, his Board of Education, and especially all our children. Back in 2009, Tommy and I were competitors, adversaries, both running for a seat on the Board of Ed. I was certain this macho tough guy had little to offer. Boy, was I wrong. I had done exactly what I teach my children not to. I judged him without knowing much about him. That first year was eye-opening. There were challenges made in public and mere brawls in private, or is that vice versa? On more than one occasion, I was ready to get off the boxing gloves and protective gear. Still, I listened and I learned. I learned that Tommy was a man of his word, even if it wasn't so eloquently spoken. I learned that he meant what he said, and he did what he said he was going to do, even if he had to stand alone to do it. I learned that he truly did care about all of the children and has worked tirelessly to do whatever he can to improve the lives of so many. I learned of countless acts of helping others in need, never looking for public acknowledgement or even a pat on the back. Now, almost seven years later, words like competitor or adversary seem silly. Now, Tommy, I call you friend. Thank you and much success no matter what you do.
Thanks.
I was trying to think of the best way to summarize your contributions to our community, and I came across a letter I had written to my friends last time he ran for election. I'm not going to read the whole letter, just the heart and soul of the letter. "Tommy and I have worked on many community projects together and share many of the same family and community values I think we all share. Through the years, I've watched him coach seventh and eighth grade boys recreation basketball, which for Tom is not just about basketball, but teaching children the important dynamics of teamwork. I remember when he spearheaded the Babies with AIDS Foundation at a time when most were ignorant of the impact of AIDS on babies. When he personally experienced bullying of a family member and learned about other children within our community experiencing bullying, he made it his mission to not only run for the Board of Education, but help establish a harassment intimidation and bullying policy with Anti-Bullying Coordinator to ensure a safe learning environment for our children free of bullying. If you want an idea of what he is like as a business owner, just ask any one of his customers. They will tell you stories of how Tom went above and beyond to help them, not just with their car repair. It is Tom's passion to do what he believes is right for our children, whether that is challenging the status quo, introducing a new policy, reviewing a significant amount of candidates for an important role as a superintendent that we now have, and trying to balance the investment the community makes with its tax dollars with the interests of our children's educational needs." Ralph Waldo Emerson has a poem called "Success." Some substance of that poem is to leave the world a bit better than the way he found it, and I surely believe that Tom Spazado has left our school district a lot better than the way he found it, and thank you for that.
So, I have to state that I've known Tom a long time in many organizations in town. UNICO, many different fundraisers, people in the... Back to our Savior Schools Committee when we did the last referendum quite a long time ago. What he does, in fact, they want to talk about taking him out tonight. He says, "I'm coaching my basketball team at 7:30. I have another one at 8:30." He's running out to coach those teams, doing things. UNICO, he's been everything from the president to the scholarship committee, everything about the kids, about the program. And truly, his family has a long career in this town. Back to his father's day, his brothers, all in sports, all in programs. Nutley's always been about family. Tommy truly embodies that family, and he's always stepped up to the plan, as he did here on the Board of Education, to support our schools and our families. So, Tommy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Tom, you're one of my dearest and closest friends, and I want to thank you for the six years that you dedicated to the school district. People may not have appreciated it, but you gave your heart and you had the kids and the district in mind. That was what you wanted to accomplish, is to leave this a better place. And you were one of the catalysts that started the change that we needed in the school district and one of the reasons why we are where we are today, and I want to thank you for that.
Thanks.
So, Tom, like Debbie, we were initially introduced in an election. Never a time did you want to start off basically with Tom Spazado in an election. I learned really quickly that a lot of supporters, some that were, I would say, rabidist supporters, that they were passionate about who you were. Our first private sit-down is a much different experience. softer, I mean, I'm not going to say you're a teddy bear, but you're definitely a lot softer than you're... give it all. You have passion, you have heart, you have more than that, and you know, I definitely respect that entirely.
Thank you.
Tommy, we go back to the days of the one-to-one separation today, and I can tell you that even with Sal's, when I met the two of you, two wonderful people, it's really hard to find somebody who can be everywhere, all the time, trying to do things as selflessly as you do. The perfect example is even tonight. You'll be leaving here, going to do two practices, and I know that these are the things that really, really keep you going. And everyone in this town is going to miss the things that you're not a part of, and they're going to be thankful for the things that you are a part of, if you're part of it. And I appreciate that as a friend to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to concur with everything to what everybody said, and I just want to thank you also for your service and your partnership for giving. Thanks.
Mr. Spazado, you and I both started our tenure on this board in the same year, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and I truly appreciate all of your support during your tenure. Thank you, and I wish you well.
Thank you, Chuck.
Mr. Spazado, it's truly been a pleasure to come with you during my tenure in district. I just want to thank you for all of your support and the direction you've given me as a board.
Mr. Spazado, you were here when I got here. I appreciate you bringing me on. There's a lot to learn. One of the most shocking things I learned about you right from the get-go is that despite our vast difference in age, we share a coach who kind of impacted both of our lives, possibly. So, it's a very small world. I also learned a great deal about how much you really care about this community and how much you care about kids. And I don't think people, and you've already echoed in some of these comments, truly understand how deep that passion goes and how much, not only are you willing to stand up and talk, but I respect as a superintendent of town that you also win the lesson. Superintendency is not an easy job. Having board members like yourselves and the other ones who are that committed to kids, kids fully, really make it not only a pleasure, but half a lot easier. You're going to be missed.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to thank you, everyone on the board, this board, previous boards. I got involved with the Board of Ed, like Debbie mentioned. It was mentioned about the bullying issues, and it was something that I felt strong about. So, that really was my main drive to get here and try to help, and actually help the town of Nutley. I appreciate all the kind words. You know I am who I am. I'm not going anywhere. I still be around. I will still be here to help whenever we need help. Russ, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been a pleasure working with former Superintendent Josara, my board members Charlie, Ryan, Sal, Debbie, Lisa, Brenda, who we've always called up for help, Danny and Sal. It's been a pleasure serving on the board. I'm going to miss negotiations, so if you need me to come back, I can help. But I did the teaching, wanted Penny more to say. So, I'm not sure we'll be working.
He's not available for that time. We'll see.
I want to just say I want to thank everyone and the community that supported me, had faith in me that I can do to help out. And I will still be here. I'm not going anywhere. I still will be involved in a lot of charities and a lot of things in town. So, you rest assured that I won't be going anywhere. You can tell Penny, Andrea, I'll still be here. I'm not going nowhere. But anyway, thank you guys with all the kind words, and thank you for having me. Yeah, can you take your time? Tom, okay?
Oh, sure. Sure.
Appropriate spot? Back, is it good? Tom, I came here specifically to congratulate all the new people joining the Board of Ed, the new Commissioner, Tuchy, and I wanted to say a few words to you directly too. You know, I don't know too many people in this room that know Tommy longer than I do. We met back at the old Washington School, St. Mary's, Rock Hills, playing basketball together. From kindergarten, if you ever wanted to have a good argument with somebody, Tommy Spazado was the guy. If it was that the ball was out of bounds at Owens for a football game, or if it was a shot we took, you know, during playing basketball. But one thing I want to tell you, Tom, eye to eye, is that it's really an honor for me to come up here tonight and wish you well, because we might not necessarily agree on every issue all the time, but I could tell the audience here that you'll never meet somebody more that cares enough for children and about the community of Nutley. So, I'm really proud to be your friend, Tom, and I want to congratulate you on all the years of service that you did. And I know that your heart was always in it, and I know, no matter where you are, that will be in your heart. You always do the right thing and fight for us. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Tom, I'm not going to echo all of the remarks that everyone made so eloquently tonight, but I'm here tonight to say thank you to you for everything that you've done. And we all know that in this world there are givers and takers. You are absolutely a giver. This district has been the fire recipient of all of your hard work and all of your dedication. You're the genuine article, and you are absolutely a man of your word. People like you are hard to come by in this day and age. So, we are very lucky to have you. I'm glad you're not going anywhere, and your input will always be welcome. Congratulations on everything that you've done.
Thank you.
On Tuesday, November 3, 2015, the annual school board of elections for the Nutley School District was held. Voting was conducted for the election of three members to the Board of Education for a three-year term and one member for a one-year term. The results of the election were as follows. Candidates for the three-year terms: Ryan Klein with 1,393 votes, Salvador Balsamo with 1,362 votes, Deborah J. Russo with 1,276 votes. Candidate for the one-year term: Brenda C. Sherman with 1,348 votes. These candidates were all elected to these positions. The copy of this report will be entered into the official minutes of the Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to administer the open office to the new board members. I'm sorry, Mr. Balsamo. Please join me with your family at the mic. You guys did a great job on the pledge of allegiance card. Mr. Balsamo, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Salvador Balsamo, do solemnly swear...
I, Salvador Balsamo, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Salvador Balsamo, do solemnly swear...
I, Salvador Balsamo, do solemnly swear...
...that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
...perform all duties of that office.
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. On behalf of Christopher Durkin's office here in the Blackberry for the Board of Education and please see this document. Okay, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Ryan Klein, do solemnly swear...
I, Ryan Klein, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Klein, do solemnly swear...
I, Ryan Klein, do solemnly swear...
...that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
...perform all duties of that office.
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Ms. Russo. Oh, your two boys are here. Come down.
Oh, my kids.
Oh, your daughter's here too. Okay.
They're a little smaller than last time, Tim. They're smaller than you.
They're definitely taller. Don't worry, they're up so tall. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Deborah Russo, do solemnly swear...
I, Deborah Russo, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Deborah Russo, do solemnly swear...
I, Deborah Russo, do solemnly swear...
...that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
...perform all duties of that office.
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
To the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
...that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter...
Am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Now you're challenging me. Pursuant to RS 19:14-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
...perform all duties of that office.
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Go vacating this evening.
You should be quiet in here, okay? I'm going to go to them like that.
I like the facing the unwake period. Roll call, Mrs. Kucinca. Mr. Balsamo.
Here.
Mr. Carnicella.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Here.
Mr. Carraro.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Salera.
Here.
Ms. Sherman.
Here.
At this time, I would like to take nominations for the office of President of the Board of Education.
First, I'd like to say, in the short time I've been here, it's been a pleasure getting to know all my fellow board members. And every one of them works very hard, dedicates a lot of time, takes time away from their family to do what they believe is right for our community. Any one of the members sitting before me would do a wonderful job serving as president. However, at this time, I'd like to nominate Charles Kaczynski, who has demonstrated, both with his actions and his words, his dedication, determination to take this district forward and to continually help students in our community, in our district, to achieve excellence.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other nominations for president?
Can I have a second, Mr. Kaczynski?
I'm waiting until we finish the vote. There being no further nominations, it is declared that the nominations are now closed. Mrs. Kucinca, please take the vote for president. Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Carraro.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
They couldn't ask more. That's true.
Mrs. Salera.
Yes.
Ms. Sherman.
Yes.
Congratulations. I believe Mr. Salera wants his name.
First of all, thank you very much, board members. I appreciate the trust that we have in each other. And we have a busy, busy year ahead of us. In reference to the commissioners who are here, we know we have quite a job ahead of the town of Nutley. It's an important time for us all, and I appreciate working with a board like this. Mr. Salera, my lifelong friend.
So, my first comment is, I put a protest in, and I was about to do a second. I've been involved in elections my whole life, from the legislature to this board, and a second second's never been stopped in history for anyone younger than mine. So, that's my first thing. Now, I do Mr. Kaczynski. Mr. Kaczynski and I have been friends my entire life, just about. There's nobody more dedicated
There's nobody more dedicated than has been involved with family in this town in the history of the bakery, the Kazinski Bakery, if you remember, to working for the fire department, to being in emergency management, to being involved with his kids in the schools, to always be being there for people. I remember when we first started, I started working for apartment wrecking when Charlie was there. There were more people that were driven, taken to hospitals, running out to ambulances that couldn't get service, that Charlie was there for. Our first Board of Educational election was shut down in a snowstorm. We were driving people to the polls, Charlie's first elections. It was quite exciting. But he has dedicated his life to more than one lady in this township. He deserves to be the president of this board and has been a very active member. And I'm pleased to serve under the influence of him. Thank you.
Nominations are now in order for the Vice President of the Board of Education. I will take nominations.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Daniel Carnicella for vice president.
I second. I second, sir.
We have a second second, Mrs. Kukusa. Thank you, Mrs. Kukusa. There are no further... There being no further nominations, it is declared that the nominations are closed. Mrs. Kukusa, please take the vote for vice president.
Mr. Belsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scheller?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
I'd like to just thank all of the board members for your support with the vice president. As Charlie had said as well, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Hopefully, together, we can continue to keep the good going, continue to navigate our challenges in the district, which always seem to show up, and really continue to put the confidence in the community that we're really taking our students into consideration and making sure we're paying attention to the stakeholders as well to make this town a better community.
I understand the commissioners have a meeting tonight. So...
One more, please.
Well, Mayor saying goodbye to Tom again. I don't know why he's not going that far out. I'd just like to congratulate you, Mr. Kazinski. I know you're gonna do a fine job. You've done a fine job in the past. Your dedication is unquestioned. Mr. Carnicella, congratulations to you. I know you're one of the newer members of the board, but I know you're a quick study. You have a lot of good people around you and together, I'm sure, to continue to move this district forward. So congratulations to both of you and we look forward to working with you.
We'll try to get back until everyone else will find John.
We'll be seeing quite a bit of each other.
I'm sure we will.
Finally, figure it out. Mr. Lutzberg, super tense report.
Mr. President, first and foremost, I wish everyone a happy 2016. We had an eventful break. I hope it was restful, rejuvenating for everyone. We have, as you mentioned, alluded to some large plans for 2016 and are excited about the possibilities. I want to congratulate our newest board member, Mr. Belsamo, welcome aboard, and Mr. Klein and Ms. Russo for returning for yet another three-year stint on the board. So congratulations to both of you. Ms. Sherman, thank you for having been here once and knowing where it actually means and still coming back. Greatly appreciate your service. Mr. Carnicella, congratulations on your new election. And Mr. Kazinski is saying goodbye to his family, the most important piece. Congratulations to him as well. Mr. Scuzzaro, one last time, thank you very much for everything you've done. I also want to offer congratulations to Dr. Valani, Mr. Pyron, Mr. Williams, and I, among the others, including the mayor. We were in attendance earlier today at our girls' home basketball game where Blair Watson broke the all-time female scoring record. Mr. Bass, Kim DiVincenzo Root, the previous holder of the record, who was there. And they got some nice pictures and it was kind of a transfer of, if you will. And most importantly, as Blair would tell you first and foremost, the Raiders took away the win. So I'm looking forward to continuing to update you. We're having a great winter season so far. As far as the December break, the word "break" was not necessarily apropos for everyone. Our maintenance and custodial staff on the direction of Mr. Nicolet was doing tirelessly while many of us were off. They were involved in every single building, doing work that's necessarily can only be done when the buildings are not open for students and staff. So we definitely want to thank all of them for their commitment, coming in and really getting the job done. I want to just remind the board that the high school security entrance was repaid this week. We're focused on completing that project before the end of the academic year. As well, final plans are in preparation for the security entrance. It has been planned for spring garden. We want to bid that in the upcoming month or months to make sure that we're prepared to start work as soon as staff is out of the building in June. Plans to be completed and open by January 17th, open for students. I want to revisit an issue that was raised at the last Board of Education meeting. I follow up and brief, but just to touch base again, there was a question about autograph and students being missed. As I assured you in writing and talking to both, not both Mr. Vilio as well as the two schools, one is a middle school and one is a high school. Our current student information system, because of the way it's set, cannot electronically do that. But we've been aware of that since we instituted real time. We have a process in place where there are checks and balances. In this specific instance, a teacher, through his due diligence, overstepped and changed a record, which was not expected to be changed. In this case, this individual student was missed. But I know that when Ms. Donahue was here, she wasn't just advocating for her own children, but for all children, I want to assure you. And her, and I will be reaching out to her again individually just to reiterate that there is a process in place to ensure that this doesn't happen. And sorry, I appreciate her bringing that to our attention. Grade eight scheduling program. The administration of the high school, as well as the captain department, as in every year, part of our academy situation, asking parents to come to a scheduling information session Wednesday, January 13th, 6:30 in the high school auditorium. It's for parents of eighth grade students. They're all invited to attend where we present information that assists the students and the parents in making that transition from eighth grade across the street to ninth grade, which is so critical and kick off those four years in as positive a manner as possible. Other than that, just want some key upcoming dates as we kick off 2016. Our NJCAP parent program, we talked about previously, but just as a reminder, is January 6th this week, 6:30 at Lincoln School. Again, the eighth grade scheduling program is the 13th at 6:30 at the high school. And as we move through in multi-teams for the year, our bilingual ESL parent advisory group continues to meet. All meetings are 6:00 PM at the high school and the next one is January 14th. The district is...
Thank you, Mr. Lutzberg. Period of citizens. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in the next agenda. Our Board Regulation Number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak one at once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Kukusa before you take the microphone. First person wishing to say anything about the two agenda items tonight, step forward. Thank you. Mr. Scheller, will you take Administration Resolution Number 1, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to offer Administration Resolution 1 to adoption.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kukusa.
Mr. Belsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scheller?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Mr. Ferrara, will you take Finance Resolution Number 1, please?
Yes, Mr. Lutzberg, I'll make the name. To approve the Finance Resolution number 1.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Belsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scheller?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinski?
Yes. Period of citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. Anyone wishing to address the board. Good evening, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108 McKinley Street, here in Nothing. First of all, congratulations to you on your election to the Board President. Not very many towns can claim to have the same Board President in three different centuries, and that's just wonderful for us. We number one again. Congratulations to you and to Mr. Carnicella. Also, I'd like to stand up here and thank Mr. Scuzzaro for his many years of service on the Board of Education. It's no secret to most of you that Mr. Scuzzaro and I have not always agreed on things. But there's one thing that I have never questioned and never challenged, and that is Mrs. Scuzzaro's dedication to the children of this town and to the general welfare of our community. And there, I stand second to none in admiration. I do thank you for all this time and I thank all of you for your time. So, thank you and happy new year to you all. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else wishing to address the board? There's all business to come before the board. There's new business to come before the board.
One, sorry, I have something. No, just one quick announcement. The Nutley hockey team under our new coaching staff actually, for the first time, won the Essex County Christmas tournament. Thirteen different teams. It was a great week and we did a great job. Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. I'm sure he's done this before.